It is February 6, 6 o'clock in the evening. We are going, I'm calling the special meeting to order. I have a declaration of a quorum. Moving on to item C, public comments. Ms. Horn, do we have any cards for any public comments?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item D, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to report from the Thompson and Horton LLP. We're going to receive this report regarding the feedback gathered from the focus groups regarding the superintendent selection process. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, and board members. The Board recalls on January the 10th, we approved a letter of engagement with Thompson and Horton to assist with services related to the superintendent selection process. And this evening, we have Dr. Moses and David Thompson here to provide feedback from the focus groups from this afternoon. And so this time, I'll turn that over to those gentlemen.
All right. Well, good evening, members of the Board, and thank you so much for the opportunity you gave us today to spend the entire day, starting early this morning, visiting with a very diverse group of your constituents here in College Station ISD. We don't know if you've heard back from any of them so far, but we will tell you that Dr. Moses and I had a very full, but a very positive day in experiences and just great interactions. We had four groups, starting at 8:30 this morning. I think all of the groups, Mike ranged between about 14 and about 17 individuals. They were each an hour and a half long, kind of structured guided conversation, so that everyone got to participate. We got a lot of questions. I've got 22 pages of notes. And so we will be sending you in the near future, a full written report, but we wanted to give you a little oral report tonight, just a flavor of what we heard during the course of the day. First of all, any comments, any questions, anything you've heard back from any of the constituents that you asked to participate? Anything you want to share with us at the outset?
I did have one person call me, and they told me that it was much more enjoyable than they were expecting. So I thought that was a good sign.
That's a good comment, thank you. I'm not sure what they were expecting, but that's... All right, well, very good. We ask a series of questions, and we went, you know, we were in a hollow square, and so we started at different points on different questions, so that the same person wasn't at the end of the line every time. And everybody had an equal opportunity to both speak, but also to listen and to learn from each other. The first question we started with is kind of a, kind of an icebreaker, sort of set the tone for the conversation, was whenever an institution like a district is going through a search like this, it's important to sort of do an assessment at the very outset, what are the strengths, what are the strong positives in the district and the community that we have to build on? What are we proud of? What's the foundation that your new leadership is going to be able to come in? That's kind of the starting point of where we're going to get to build and go forward. And again, I'll give you just a flavor of some of the comments. We had a number of comments that I'll describe as one-off. We heard them one time during the day. You'll see those when you see the full report. But you'll also see, what you get when you do this process is themes naturally emerge. Over the course of a day, you will see a few strands or themes that just naturally get repeated and emphasized during the course of the day. So some of the strengths that we heard over and over. This is a district and a community that sets and keeps high standards, high expectations, a culture of excellence. It was said in different ways, but that was the general, the general theme that we heard over and over. Second theme is there is an emphasis on the whole child. And again, that was said in different ways, but there was an emphasis, people talked about recognizing well-rounded children, taking care of the social emotional needs of children, not just the academic needs of children, making sure that there are a variety of activities, so that all children have something that they can find to participate in and to belong to. But that emphasis on not just kind of one thing, but on trying to be well-rounded and meeting the broader needs of all of your children. Over and over, we heard a theme about strong connections between the district and the community, and that there is very strong community support for the schools, a lot of community involvement in the schools. Some comments, that showed up in comments about fundraising or different activities that people participate in, people turning out for not just sporting events, but there was a comment about the theatrical program and plays that people turn out and participate in support. And so that was a theme, I will say. There was definitely a theme about that you have excellent and outstanding teachers, administrators, and staff. A recognition that being in close proximity to a major university like A&amp;M obviously gives you an opportunity from a recruitment standpoint that is very important. But again, it was said in different ways. This is a district that people strive to belong to, and the district overall has just an extremely high-quality cadre of teachers and administrators. And several people went further and said in that comment that they weren't just talking about the academic qualifications of your teachers and administrators. Several people said, what I mean is they are solid, they have a strong moral core, they're the kind of people you want to be around. And so just a lot of compliments in that regard that we would bring to your attention. Mike, if you want to add anything on the strengths, or then I'll move on to the next one. Would you like to?
Do you want to challenge?
Why don't you come up and do the challenges?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. It has been a pleasure today to spend time with many of your constituents, and David and I really appreciated the people that were present. And you did give us a great cross-section of the community, and you gave us people from all walks of the district, which I really liked. I've got to tell you that I think both of us would say we were pretty blown away by the students that were there, too. They were really, and I think even the participants, after the students would comment, some of the participants would say, do I have to follow that? Do I have to try to add to their comments? But really, an outstanding cadre of people. David mentioned, we talked to them about strengths, and I just underscore what he had to say with regard to the strengths. Certainly, staff came up, program offerings, the dedication of the people here, family atmosphere, close-knit community, those type of things. We also turned it around, we say, we say, school districts don't have problems, but we do say that school districts have challenges. So would you talk to us a little bit about the challenges? And that's when the conversation gets a little more, where people get a little more verbal, because even though they're very proud of the district, they also note things that, and we invited them to note things they thought were challenges. You would, you will not be surprised, because this is, you're very well-versed on your district, but growth and all things dealing with growth, including facilities, including attendance boundaries, including zoning, all those subjects came up as challenges. And there was, there was a pretty robust discussion in most of the groups about that, and that a new superintendent was going to need to be sensitive to that, and was going to have to appreciate that, and also continue to work with the Board on that as the district continues to grow. That is probably not, those are not issues that are going to go away. Another, another end of, some of the individuals, I thought, showed a real understanding and a real high level of sophistication with regard to the budgeting challenges that the district goes through, and some of the financial areas of concern. Some of the participants even recognized the potential problems that tax caps could create for this district in the future. And I thought, you know, that it shows a well-informed community, it shows well-informed people about the issues that you're facing and some of the things that are coming before you. They also talked about someone that challenge would be unifying our district, or keeping our district unified, would be something that they thought would be faced. Quite a bit of talk about mental health issues for students, particularly needy children. Safety and security was also a challenge, and I probably, that might even be the one that needs to be mentioned first, although that was maybe not mentioned most often. But in terms of importance, I think we would all agree that safety and security for our students and employees is the highest priority. So that certainly came up, that was certainly mentioned as a challenge going forward. And David, I think that's probably the high-level ones. I don't know if you want to talk about any of the others?
I'll give one.
Oh, can I add one? I didn't, that, there was, there were comments, several comments, about the efforts that the Board had made, and that the district had made in rezoning to create comparable composition. And that came up repeatedly, and it was...
In a positive way.
In a very positive way, in a way that most of the participants indicated appreciation and agreement. And some of the students were particularly articulate with regard to their thoughts on that, and why they thought that was beneficial to the district. So David, I'll let you add anything else to the challenges that you want to, you want to talk about.
I'll add one, because I was impressed with the number of times, kind of from different points of view, Mike, that individuals brought it up, and it wasn't just your educators, it was also people outside the district. But we were very impressed with their, the broad, the broad understanding of what's going on in the district and the community. And the one I would add, Mike, that I think we had a lot of conversation about, and this isn't a College Station subject as much as a Texas subject, but there is a recognition of a growing population of at-risk and low SES children. And a number of people said, we are, we are very proud that we have a number of extremely high-achieving and very successful students. We have to make sure that we hear from, hear from not just the louder voices, but voices that don't always get heard, and that we also figure out how to meet the needs of low-income children and that portion of the population, so that all kids have opportunities to experience high-quality programs and advance as much as possible in their own academic and just personal growth. And Mike, I would say the comment about the very intentional efforts that the district has made with regard to the composition of your various campuses was mentioned positively in the context of that discussion about that particular challenge. There was a recognition that the district is devoted a lot of time, attention, resource, efforts, but it was mentioned as a challenge. Anything else you want to add? All right. All right, we're going to move on. The next question, you know, kind of, so after doing that kind of baseline assessment, and again, you'll see all the comments, we then turned to really kind of talking about the type of individual that the Board ought to prioritize, think about the type of, not only personal attributes, but the type of professional characteristics, professional bases touched, if you will, that your community wants to see the Board kind of, kind of have in mind as you think about your next superintendent. And this included things like, you know, are you open to a non-educator? Is this, is this a time to think about non-traditional leadership? Or do you want somebody who is, has been really successful in education? Teacher experience, principal experience, superintendent experience, doctorate and not doctorate, questions of that nature. Those were the type that we moved to next. And the general flavor is, without exception, we didn't hear a single person say, you know, we need somebody to lead this district who's never been in education. Let's experiment. Without exception, every single person said, we need someone who really deeply understands education. We want somebody who has had successful experience in the classroom as a teacher, and not just the minimum, not just kind of stay for the minimum number of years, and then as quick as they can get out of the classroom and start a progression, they want to see real genuine success and understanding of what goes on in the classroom. Without exception, campus-level leadership, principal experience was spoken very highly as a priority. We had mixed comments about whether prior experience as a superintendent was necessary or not. I think there was a broad sense that at least experience in central office in a district comparable to College Station was important. We had a few people say, you know, this is a community that values education, and, you know, all things being equal, a doctorate would really be nice, preferred. We didn't have a single person say, it's an absolute requirement. But I will tell you, the overwhelming number of comments we heard today were individuals who say, I care less about that, I care less about the degrees than about the experience. I want to know about the experiences that a person has had, and the successful experiences that a person has had. Mike, do you want to mention a couple?
I think you've hit the high points. I think the, again, it was pretty overwhelming that, as someone said, we want someone who's come up through the ranks, we want someone who has touched the bases in the classroom as a campus principal, some feeling that if someone had both elementary and secondary experience as a principal would even be great, even though there was a recognition that that might be difficult. But certainly, a feeling that that, that campus principal's experience was really important. But David, I think is, was on the money, and that a problem solver, someone that could be a visionary, someone that had the right experiences, much more important probably than the, certainly, they wanted someone who was credentialed and certified, but as far as a terminal degree, that was certainly not deemed completely necessary. But I thought, all in all, that the participants had a, had a good handle on the type of individual that they, they thought ought to be considered by the Board.
Do you want to add the next one?
We did, sure. We did personal characteristics next, and we asked the participants in all the groups to talk to us a little bit about the kind of personal characteristics, and then we went on from the professional. I think almost, without exception, every group in some shape or form said, we've got to have someone who is, and this won't surprise you, a great communicator, someone that can certainly address a lot of different subjects in our community, but basically certainly communicates with the Board, but communicates with the staff, communicates with parents, and has an organized or a strategic approach to communication. We heard things like, though, great listener, and there, and a few people said, not only listen to us, but hear us, and someone that serves with integrity, a team builder, visionary, I think I've mentioned that already. That was mentioned multiple times as well. Students said the word, person of hope, a person who creates hope. And I thought that was, again, another good example of their insight. Humble came up repeatedly, honest, compassionate, caring, someone that, they said, we'd like someone that's more steak than sizzle, that actually goes out and gets the work done, and knows how to get involved and do the work. And then the word affirming was also mentioned multiple times. As David said, we heard a lot of different words, maybe one or two or three times. I'm giving you words we heard multiple times throughout the day. But I think, active in the community, and visible, and approachable, someone that's, we're not, doesn't make us feel unwelcome. So those are some of the highlights. David, you want to add any of those?
Let's move up to the last one. Do you want to do it?
I can't. You will.
All right. And then the last question we ask every group, kind of, to hopefully bring some closure and really end with some consensus, is think about the direction of the district, and kind of on a scale, you know, whether some people think in a 1-10 scale, a five-point scale, however you want to think about it, is the district moving in the right direction? Or does the district need to change direction? And maybe change direction a little bit, a little bit, or really a lot of change? And so just try to get a sense of everybody's field, just kind of on a holistic level, or is the district moving in the direction it needs to go? Without exception, every single person today said, we're moving in the right direction. Some people probably would rate that more as a five on a 10-point scale. I would say the majority would be a little bit higher than that. Every person did say, that doesn't mean we're complacent, it doesn't mean we're happy, it doesn't mean we don't have things to work on. One of the students, and again, to Mike's point, the student comments are always so appreciated and appreciated, and really insightful. And one student said, just in his, in his life, he said, you know, my view of things is you're always going to have a certain set of limited problems or things you have to work on. And he said, my guess is about the time you get those solved, there's going to be another set that come along. You know, it's not ever going to be, well, we're done, we're out of problems. And I thought that was a very insightful comment for a young person. But I would say the overall tenor we heard was, we feel like we're moving in the right direction. We obviously have issues that are going to need to be addressed. There are some things that need more attention within the district than perhaps they are getting. But on a holistic level, we're confident and happy, satisfied was another word that got used, with the overall direction of the district.
I was certainly going to emphasize that we invited people to be very candid, and they were. And I think the phraseology I might use would be pleased, but not satisfied, that we don't want to be complacent, but we like the direction, like the trend line. There are some individuals that said, we need to be careful, that we don't get stagnant, or we could be stagnant, or we could be, you know, we don't want to be a district that just says, well, as David said, we're caught up, our problems are solved. And I say that because I think all districts have challenges. But I also, you know, like to remind, remind the groups today that one of my favorite, I guess, pieces of philosophy was a former Prime Minister of Great Britain, Tony Blair, when they asked him, is America a country in decline? And he said, well, there's one way to judge a country, and I applied it to a state and a school district, how many people are trying to get out, and how many people are trying to get in? And I kind of view this district as a place where people are still coming, you're still growing. I don't know that there are that many people trying to get out. But I think there were certainly people who thought, we're doing some really good things, but we've got, still got work to do. And I think that's probably a good place to be. I don't think you want complacency, I don't think you want necessarily satisfaction. But I think it was a responsible position that not only the parents, the business people took, but I think your teachers and your principals, your educators took responsible positions about where we are as a district and where we need to go in the future. But really, all in all, I was, I have to say again, really impressed with the level of just sophistication and thoughtfulness that people brought to the table today. It was, it was enlightening, but it was also fun.
David? So just in wrapping up our brief oral report, overall sense during the course of the day, highly positive. A lot of strong feelings about the excellence of programs within the districts, the connections within the district, and between the district and the community, and generally, high satisfaction with the direction the district is going, with the caveat that when you see our report, there are obviously some things that will need some attention, and there are, there is still work to be done. So, but a general sense of, that affirmed what Mike and I probably already suspected we would hear, that it was a very positive, forward-looking set of comments that we were able to obtain during the course of the day. So, Mr. President, we'll stop there and see if the Board has any questions, or any comments, or anything you would like to share with us.
Do we have some comments, remarks to ask our consultants?
I just want to say thank you. I heard some from some constituents that really felt like it was well-led, and they did have the opportunity to speak. And I would think I was most, concerned isn't quite the right word, but for the students who are participating, not that, that it wouldn't have gone well, but, you know, in that type of focus group or situation, when you are with adults, business owners, teachers, someone you may have, you know, gone to school with, that it was so important that their perspective was heard. And that's why they were there, not to, not to agree with everyone else in the room. And so it was, it was great to get that feedback, that they did feel like they could share their perspective, so.
And the moment was not too big for any of them. They were, none of them, none of them, none of them were overwhelmed. They spoke, and, you know, some more forcefully than others, but boy, they were, they were...
They had a lot to share.
They were thoughtful. They were thoughtful.
Thank you for that feedback.
I'll basically add similar feedback. I did get one phone call late this afternoon, just saying that, not surprisingly, it was very well-managed by you two gentlemen, very professionally managed, and that they really felt like their voices, their voice was heard, and they thought that every voice in that room was heard. And so appreciate you guys doing that. That's why we have you here, to get those voices.
Our goal is to hear from them on your behalf, so we were there as your eyes and ears.
Yeah, can I say one thing? Yeah, and I know there are probably a couple of participants that are here. We probably were guilty of, we wanted everybody to get to talk and speak on every question we posed, so we kind of had to keep it, keep things moving a little bit. But we, again, not, we wanted everybody to get a chance to talk, and everybody that came got a chance to comment. I think on, everybody got at least five opportunities to speak in each one of the sessions. So nothing's worse than being asked to come and offer input, and then not get to give any. So we tried to keep it moving where people could get a chance to talk.
And, Mr. President, we will, I will take all of my notes, all of, oh, I'm sorry, I'll hold my comment. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, did, did the participants, did they see a correlation or causation between the superintendent's office and the strengths and the challenges and the direction of the district that you talked about? Did they, you know?
I believe, I would say the answer to that is yes. We had a number... We had a number of people in each session make the comment that what we need is a person who can develop a plan, work a plan, modify a plan as needed, someone who can help working with the board, develop the vision and then actually create energy, excitement, enthusiasm around moving toward a vision and the work that has to be done to get the district where you want to be in three, five, 10 years down the road. I, I believe, I would say, to the extent we heard comments addressing your question, people do understand that there is a connection between the leadership at the superintendent level, just like there's a connection between leadership at the board table and what happens on the campuses and in the classrooms that, so I, I think they recognize the importance of the decision you're making. Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I, I would agree in that they understand that leadership matters. We, in talking about the characteristics, we heard a lot of aspirational things and I, and I call them aspirational things because I think a community has a right to expect a lot. I think the board has a right to expect a lot in terms of what you're looking for in an individual. Having said that, we did tell everyone or did say to everyone, at the end of the day, the board only gets to hire a mortal and that, that person will hopefully be someone that has so many of these characteristics that they'll be able to lead in an inspirational way. But they will probably also be subject to the same types of, shall I call it, second-guessing and criticisms, but that goes with the service, just like it, it goes with your service. But I do think the people that were participating today, they understand that the board takes this undertaking very seriously and understand that there is a relationship between the leadership of the district and the issues the district faces and how they're going to be addressed. It doesn't necessarily promise a outcome for every, for everyone's concern, but it promises at least, the board commits to at least an effort with a new leader to try to, try to really address the big concerns in the district. Anything else?
Mr. President, we will take my notes and Dr. Moses' notes. We will start.
He had 20 pages. He had 22.
We'll start tomorrow immediately, getting them typed, prepared, organized and, and within the near future, as soon as we kind of get everything compiled, we'll get it back to you and the board can then have that information to kind of read and digest and we know it'll be helpful to you as you move forward through your selection process.
I would like to thank you also for the comments that I heard and we are looking forward to working with y'all as we, you know, work through this process.
Great.
If there's, if there's not any more questions, I think we'll move to item E. The board will meet an executive session. The board will meet an executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employees. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters, closed meetings exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in section 551.074 of the Texas Governmental Code. Mr. Martin, at this point, we're going to go into executive session and if we need anything, we will come out and get you. How's that?
Sounds good.
Thank you. I am calling us back into order. It is 8:03 PM. Board members, we've heard some preliminary information from our consultants about our committee meetings today and I look forward to receiving the full report and we'd like to see if either David or Mike would like to make any final comments.
I would, real quickly.
Yep.
Do I think you can be up here?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, you trust me, we were remiss in giving our report. We wanted. We own? Okay, we were remiss in giving our report, but I, I wanted to pay a special, or give special thanks to Carrie for all of her help. She did a great job. I told her, we, we don't get treated that well every place we go, but we were really treated well today and we appreciate her very much. Thank you.
She definitely takes care of us all. At this time, I'm going to pass out to everybody BJA local and BJA legal, and this is regards to the superintendent qualification and duties. What I'd like for everybody to do is take some time and review those. Got a question. Is the boardroom available Monday at noon?
Mr. President, we can make it available at night.
Okay, okay. I'd like to call a special board meeting for Monday at noon and purpose of this meeting is I'd like for y'all to spend the weekend going over the BJA local and legal, is in regards to the superintendent qualification and duties. And I think we really need to take some time and reflect on a lot of the comments that we heard today and reconvene on Monday. I'm going to make sure everybody gets one of these. They're, they're together.
Just do it.
Any, any further questions or comments for tonight? If not, this means adjourned. Thank you.